All right, it's February 6th. I'm gonna call the Board of Selectmen's meeting to order. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board just came out of a non-public session under RSA 91A. And I'll entertain any motions.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the minutes to the non-public be sealed until such time as majority of the board members feel that is wise and prudent to unseal them.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we're gonna move on to approval of minutes. Do we have anybody?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the public and non-public minutes dated January 15th, 2018.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we adopt the minutes of the keynote public hearing, which was held on January 15th, 2018.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we adopt the minutes for the public hearing for the budget and warrant articles that was held on January 15th, 2018.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we adopt the public meeting minutes dated January 27th, 2018.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's a lot of minutes. Did we get them all?
I think so.
Yep, we got them all.
All right, moving on to scheduled business. I think, so the fire rescue station update, Mike might be here later, right? So, we'll skip over that one for now. The phone system upgrade, and quote, do we wanna do that now, or do we need?
No, Dennis has just talked in.
So, we don't need Eastern Seaboard?
No.
No? Okay. Do you wanna move on to that one?
Yeah, so, this is, excuse me. Dennis's company, First Access Technology, has an offer for us to upgrade our telephone system. I need a timeout here.
Are we still on TV? We should start selling, like, commercial breaks. Make some revenue for the town.
You saw them, okay. You saw that, Bobby.
Was he the owner of the Greenhouse?
Like that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah?
It was.
Gets it under our max.
Mm-hmm. I'm sorry.
Now, will 10 people know?
What happened? Where'd she go?
I don't know. Okay. Is she okay?
She had to go see something going on with the cable.
Doug waved her.
Oh, I missed that, okay.
Hello, Doug. What'd you say, you got another job?
Can we move on to another item and come back to this one?
I'm just...
I don't know if there's something wrong with cable or not.
Yeah, so, give it a couple more minutes. If we're definitely gonna be dead in the water, we'll move on.
The only noise we have going on is a stapler.
I even bring one of these things. Nothing worse than running out.
No, we're gonna skip those. He had a health issue in the family he had to take care of, so it's nothing that can't wait for two weeks.
What's that? Hey, I don't think we're on.
There we are.
I don't think this is...
Drill. Send out an email tomorrow or Thursday.
I can. I may pass, so I can finish up the town report, but Kim and Kim are gonna both be there, so you should be covered.
Yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Jim, you coming next week for the drill?
He's stapling papers.
What day is it?
Wednesday, Valentine's Day. My guess is.
Chinese food.
I'll be there.
We're doing Chinese first?
Yeah. I'll send you those down.
I had so much Chinese food from Super Bowl.
I wanna try to order it Tuesday night. I don't get out of work till 5:00. Let's see.
When on Tuesday, though?
Yeah, exactly. I just wanna look at this real quick.
You could pick the card over the phone.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I think you did last time.
Okay.
Sorry.
No problem. So, we're...
That's the clipping I keep hearing.
The stapler.
What's that clipping coming from?
The stapler.
Are you done yet?
You ready for him?
I was just gonna, let me...
Do you wanna purchase everything?
So, basically, Dennis's company has a proposal to purchase a $10,000 system, phone system, that he's willing to sell to us. It is used for $2,600?
$2,700.
$2,700, and that's including labor. $2,600 on the...
Twenty-six, that's fine.
Yeah, okay.
Whatever it says.
Okay, whatever, it's $2,600.
He always waited on what, 22?
It's 26, huh?
The system is not a voice-over IP system. It's a digital phone system. So, right now, we have what's called an analog system, which doesn't have any features, basically, or has very limited features. This system will allow us to have caller ID. It also allows us to use, like, a contact list, so you can speed dial people. You can't do that on these phones right now. And you can have, there's, like, a lot of programmable buttons on it. I don't think we'll use them all, but that is a feature. It comes with 12 phones?
Whatever you needed.
Yeah, so, it would replace all the phones, and this is just for the town hall at this point. I believe the fire department has this system.
It's exactly the same as the fire department.
Yeah, so, it's an upgrade, is what it is, but it's not the voice-over IP upgrade. You would still connect through your, either earth link, which we have right now, or through Avea? No, not Avea. No, Vaya's a company, right?
Yeah.
You might still step up.
That's the phone company.
You can take a look. Pass it over.
Yeah.
Now, would this system be compatible if we were gonna go to just dialing extension and you get the fighter and police departments?
You could do that. That's additional. It's listed in here as, let me get on the mic. It's listed on the agreement to show the word "optional" on the bottom of page 1, where the blue line is. And I, oh, I see something else on the bottom. That was not intended to be there, that diagram. That was for the, yeah, thank you. Where the blue line is across the top, what unfortunately happened, and I say unfortunately because one of my clients passed away. She was not too, she was young, perhaps younger than people that are here, and her estate, her lawyer, had to liquidate assets. And they contacted me, and they said, "Do you wanna buy back the phone system that you provided us a few years ago?" And I said, "Yes, I do." What I did was, I basically am putting in what I paid for the system, plus the labor for me to get to the location, as well as the installation cost, and that's where the $2,600 came out. It is not new. It was handled, it was owned by a CPA. The, it is, it literally looks untouched, because it wasn't, like, a very, it was a very organized location, very clean location. I wanted to let you know that. I am also in this agreement, I took out one of the items that you don't need, which was a speakerphone for a large area like this, and replaced it with two phones that Diane and I talked about replacing those items. So, it meets the needs of what you currently have today, but its future is available. In other words, you can talk over the Internet optionally, and I put that down on the bottom. You have the ability to connect to the fire department and police station through three-digit dialing. And one of the examples is, let's say, someone was going to be out for a couple hours, you could certainly forward the calls over to the up-and administrator at the town hall, and they could answer the calls for the police station. Yeah, I don't know why the diagrams got mixed in with that.
These aren't supposed to be, right?
There was one, I didn't mean to hand those out. I apologize.
None of them?
Just the blue line item, did you have that? Or did I not make enough copies?
Yeah.
I may not have made enough copies.
Yep.
Everybody have this one?
Yeah. That's probably what happened.
And we have it on our desktop, right? Diane, same?
Yeah, I just updated this a few minutes ago.
Oh, you did, okay.
Because what I did is, I didn't have the options. I got the exact price. And I can give, maybe I can talk, you know...
We can share.
Yeah, I can give you the exact price today. That's why I, as an option, to go with talking over the Internet.
Put that on my screen.
And that was my reason for giving, getting an update just a few minutes ago.
Okay.
Diane will have this copy emailed to her. And on the second page, the second option, and again, these are not required, the system will work just fine the way it is, is to allow you to have three-digit dialing between here and the fire station-police station combination. The reason why I needed to speak to you today is because there's a demand for this type of pricing in this system, and I said to Diane, I said, "This timing, unfortunately for this young lady, was not good, but I wanted to at least give you the option of saying yes or no." And then I move on to another customer of mine. It's the next generation. It has the ability to support IP phones, just like the fire department has the ability to support IP phones. It's the same software release. You are, I'm sorry about that. I mean, it's the essential version. There are three different versions, basic, essential, and preferred. You have, this is both essential, that license is there. What is not included is, like I said, the SIP license. You have, the fire department has released 9.1. The latest release is 10.1. I haven't gotten the price to upgrade to 10.1. I will get that to you if you wanted to go to the latest release. I'm required to do more homework before I can get that price. It's not, again, not required to do anything within the, you're not forced to upgrade to 10.1 to take advantage of features. So, that's the reason why I needed to kinda talk to you about it. And, you know, unlimited mailboxes, where today you have a limitation on mailboxes. The, just like the police and fire, I'm sorry, the fire department and emergency management, they have the ability to check their voicemail by just pressing a button called "Listen." You know, press another button, rewind. There's no keystrokes, like ones and twos and threes and all that. It's just, it's on the display. There's no more paper labels. And also, the key thing is that Diane, you know, I could, we give her the software, and she could administer the system. So, as long as she is on the data network, we put software on the system, she can say, changing a name, reset a password, whatever it is. We don't like to get too complicated with it, but you have the ability to do that. That software is free and available. So, I just wanted to let you know that this software is out there, because I paid a low amount, I wanted to pass it on to the town.
I kinda like the idea of having that speakerphone, so we can stop getting call-in questions.
I figured you didn't need it.
Long time listener first.
It's a conference room phone. It's meant for a room like this size.
So, does the town hall phone system need to be upgraded?
Oh, yeah, it's very outdated and very limited right now.
Yeah, that system was probably made in the early '90s, maybe late, mid-'90s.
It gotta be at least 25 years old.
So, one thing I just wanna let you know, too, is with this, the mailboxes, every person could have a mailbox, so you could have Selectmen Doggett, Gonya, the whole thing. You could each have your own voicemail box.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, and...
Bob and Jim will get one.
And from what I see here, it looks like it can actually be forwarded to our cellphones if we wanted it to.
That's pretty good.
Yeah, we've done that with the fire department. We can transfer calls to cellphones, so if there's a particular person that isn't always on site, and you just say, "I wanna speak to the, say, you know, road manager, press a digit," or, you know, you pick up the call live, you can transfer it to that extension, which then transfers to the cellphone.
Which means we have the option of either having it go directly to our cellphone, or go into a voicemail box that we'd have to dial into to get the message.
Yeah, you don't have to do that.
So, just so I'm understanding it, so we could do the, would you say, three-number dialing from here to the PD and fire? What if we ever wanted, I don't know, transfer station library if we wanted them added?
We can do a, because the system is IP-enabled, there's no reason why we can't put an IP phone, or several phones in that area, and they can then be basically a part of this system here. It needs an Internet connection to get, to do that, and I'm sure they have one.
So, that would just be, like, future planning. We should, we don't have to do it this year necessarily, but we'd wanna look at doing that in the future, I think. Any town office, there should be a three-number for it, I would think.
Yeah, as long as there's an Internet, I haven't been to a transfer station, it might, you know...
It does have an Internet connection.
Yeah, it's things like that, there's certain things you can do. I think I gave Diana probably more information she'd ever want to know about the features of the system, and I can answer any questions you might have regarding it.
So, if we bottom lined this, the purchase price for the system is $2,600, right?
Which includes installation.
With installation. And then there's, when I was looking at it today, there's maintenance fees?
The maintenance, right now, I provide one-year parts and labor, and that's included. If you, I did an estimate, if you wanted to do a post-warranty maintenance, and I have to do the exact, you know, calculations, but it would be about $880 per year if you wanted to do a parts and labor support on that system. And we also would do remote programming, would talk you through any changes you might want to do. We use things like Join.me and Get On with the Client and manage the system remotely. We did a client in Buffalo, New York, for example. We didn't have to go to Buffalo, New York to do the work, but it's just because of the software, we're allowed to share their screen.
So, just a random question that just came to mind, Al Call, would that, if you don't know what that is, what is that, a software that we have?
That's a 1-800 number we just called.
So, it's a 1-800 number, so it doesn't matter where you come?
Yeah, it's just a call-out, correct?
Yeah.
That's independent of this.
Okay. So, obviously, if we lost Internet in a storm or something like that, we'd have no phones.
Well, this is, the way I have it without the options is, is it runs on traditional earth-linked phone lines. That's the way the customer had it when I purchased it. To go with the, on the bottom of that page with the blue line, if you did lose the Internet, some, you know, telephone pole got hit and was taken down, the service provider has a backup that doesn't cost anymore. It's simply, the cloud answers the call, and it has a predetermined automated menu, and they would then route to cellphones, or whatever way you wanna designate. So, if there's a transfer station number, you could say, "For transfer station, press this digit," it calls that number. If you said, "For the clerk, town clerk," it goes to the cellphone number of the town clerk. So, it's just a matter of, the backup is the cloud. And if someone hit a telephone pole, your copper lines would go down, perhaps, as well.
They'd probably lose all power, so it wouldn't matter.
Well, yeah, that's the thing.
Yeah.
When it's out at my house.
Even if you lose power, even if you had a generator, but if you lose power, this would also kick in with the automated menu.
I don't know, it sounds like a pretty good opportunity to me.
Yeah, I hate to, you know, have to give you a short-term, you know, timeline on it, but it's something that, there's quite a demand for it.
We're glad that you thought of us for this. We're glad that you thought of us.
Yeah, you know, it's because of what else is going on in the town, and because the fire department already had it, and I just said, you know, "Might as well offer it."
Right.
And if you don't take it, that's fine, I have others behind.
We'll be in all... Do you have the money in general funds?
I was just looking at my budgets. I do have some in the executive for equipment purchase, and I have some in the general government buildings.
So, Dennis, so if we sign tonight, would you settle for 24? Can you walk out of here with a yes?
Yeah, that means yes. Yeah, I can do that.
You're quite a negotiator, Larry.
So, is that a motion, Larry?
Can I make that a motion?
Go for it.
So, if Dennis...
I'll sign that. I can authorize that.
So, Dennis Weenie from, what's it, Access?
First Access Technology.
First Access will accept $2,400 for the new phone system for the town hall, which will allow the town hall to communicate with the PD and the fire department with the three-digit and some more advanced technology for $2,400.
Second.
You get that one, Diane? That's a long one.
Yeah.
I'll figure it out.
All righty. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And does anybody, do we need to talk about the service agreement tonight?
I would honestly suggest one.
The service agreement would...
I was gonna say, right, on the service agreement, first what I'd like to do is let Diane, you know, she's got a lot of skill sets. Let her test it out, see what she thinks, and kick the tires.
That's like, 'cause that's probably gonna have to need one down there. That's just a town hall.
Yes, but she could administer the other one as well. It's up to you.
Larry's looking for more.
Hello?
She hasn't had time.
I like how Dennis is offering you services.
So, yeah, that's a good idea. So, I didn't realize we had a built-in one-year to start, so we'll know.
Yeah, you do.
We'll be talking in a year, and we'll figure out what we need to do after that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So, we'll be talking at the end of the year.
So, we appreciate you bringing this to us. It sounds like it'll be a good upgrade for the town, so...
So, you start tomorrow? No, just kidding.
No, it's in my inventory, so I literally could, maybe not tomorrow, but maybe this week.
You work that out with Diane, too.
I'd like to do a little bit of training first with Diane.
Excellent.
So, on this quote, you're gonna need to update it, and then they'll sign it?
Well, this has been, I can update the number.
Are you okay?
I'll update the number.
Okay. So, do you want him to, do you want somebody to sign this?
Yeah, I can sign, I'll get it to you tomorrow. I mean, it doesn't have to be, you can cross it out by hand right now and sign it. I'll sign it, too.
Yeah.
Do you want to authorize the chairman to sign? A copy, one copy?
So, what I would suggest is, Larry, maybe you wanna just alter your motion to authorize...
Authorize the board?
So, I'm gonna alter the motion to authorize the board to sign the contract tonight.
Chairman.
Chairman, sorry, yeah.
Chairman to sign, for the total purchase price of $2,400.
And that was, were you the second, Bob?
Second.
Okay, all in favor on the addendum or whatever?
Aye.
Aye, so that's everybody? Okay, so I'll just sign that tonight, then, before you take off.
Yeah, just initial it, would be good.
I would've gone for two, but, I would've gone two.
I think go two. Oh, no. No, that's a good price.
I'll just sign this, and we'll move on. 6th of February?
6th, yep.
What I did was, I initialed it. I changed the discount, I changed the bottom line, and I initiallyed it with the date.
Perfect.
I can actually give you a projection, but whenever you want. I mean, I'll be very small.
Can he sign, can he sign another one, so we have one for our records?
I'll just take copies.
Well, he's taking it with him, isn't he?
I just need to make a photocopy.
Pass that down.
You can take that.
Oh, okay.
And scan, and email.
Okay.
All right, I can do that.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
We'll see you soon.
Yeah, we're gonna skip CND for the police, the chief could not make it, so we'll see
him.
Yeah, that's...
We'll see him down the road, and we're gonna...
We will keep that.
We can keep that. This was actually, I apologize.
Thank you.
And we're gonna move on to E, which is proposed transfer station policy for commercial So, this was on the warrant last year, and I don't remember the exact wording of the warrant.
It included the word "implement."
Where was that?
It include, it did include the word "implement."
It did include it, okay.
Yes, it did.
So, really, what I'm in favor of is, and Lisa, you and Jim put this together, if you click on the link, the...
Correct. So, these are essentially bulleted items that Jim and I came up with, got some feedback from one of the interested parties, and from our transfer station manager. So, before we go and update and make this part of the official policy, we want to at least give the board a review of where our thought process was going with this, and to see if you guys see any red flags or anything that you don't agree with. Now is the right time to be looking at it.
I looked it over, and this is kinda what I had in mind, so...
Wave a mind if you want.
I mean, the only other thing I would caution, too, is what we're talking about, as I think we all know right now, is a pilot, so we're not talking about establishing a "from here to eternity" policy. So, I do think to launch a pilot, and let's say we pick a date of, like, April 1st or whatever, you know, something like that, and we say 90 days, or whatever, whatever we think the length should be to get the most data, right? I don't think we need the official, you know, written policy that's been vetted by 12 people. I almost see it as you start with a page like this, and then as you move along, it's during the pilot, you're gathering data to update this, so at the end of the pilot, if we vote to decide to make this a permanent thing, then we write the policy based on what we've learned and have a, you know, approved, published policy. But I don't, if we're doing a pilot, what I'm saying is, I don't think we need the same level of rigor around the pilot as we would with a permanent policy.
Yeah, I have one concern when it comes to a pilot program. And it's not so much a concern for the town as it is for the guinea pig who decides to do the pilot for us. And what would happen is, this individual would have to not only abide by these things, but they would have to go out and get these customers and say, "Well, you know, I might be able to do this for a week, I might be able to do it for three months, I might be able to do it six months, I might be able to do it permanently. I don't know." So, if you go with me, you see what I mean? So, it's kind of putting this person in a little bit of a sticky situation.
The only thing I disagree with is this person. The only thing I disagree with is, this person, I think we should try to solicit multiple people to do it.
Well, pilot this person or persons.
Right, I, I, but I agree with everything else you've said, that it is, that's, that's the only thing, like, if I'm just talking to think here hypothetically, you know, we've, we put a post on the website, anybody who's interested, let's say we, we have a few people interested, let's say we have three parties that are interested, we tell the three parties, we're gonna start this pilot, if you can live with this, we're gonna start on April 1st, and we're gonna go to June 1st, I don't know what it would be, uh, and then if you solicit customers, they have to have that understanding, that this is not necessarily gonna be forever, if you're signing them up, uh, you're gonna have to do whatever you need to do to make them understand, this is a pilot, it's an experiment, so.
Just one thing I would, I would say, simply as one of the two authors of this, is that when you said, you know, this is kind of, what you'd like to see is, you know, guidelines for pilot, I think it needs to have more, be more than just guidelines, it needs to have some sort of a, not endorsement of the board, but adoption of the board to say, yes, these are the basic, not quite carved in cora marble, but, these are the, the minimums, and they are subject to change at any point.
Right, right.
What number you want, Jim, two?
No, he's saying in general terms.
Right, but it needs to be pretty much a policy of the town, in order to be able to implement.
Like.
One of, the only thing that, in reading through this, I realized is lacking, and that is, um, who is going to enforce?
This one.
Right.
And we do need to list that.
For me, it'd be the transfer station.
Excuse me?
To me, it'd be the transfer station.
Okay, well, we need, we need to specify that.
Right, right.
Right, well, you do see the, we have the three down below, they'd be maintaining the list of permit holders, monitoring and tracking the trips to the transfer station, and monitoring the loads for properly marked bags, so we do have that.
Right, to me, it's kinda like, in the past, we've had, uh, transfer station manager come to us and say, somebody came in, and they tried to dump paint, and they've come to us, and they said, we've identified them, Board of Selectment, could you please issue something?
No, I, I realize that, but I, like Laura, I like to see things.
Right, right.
But just have a question with number one?
Sure.
As far as the lottery goes, so, say, Joe Smith gets it, and he gets his client list all done, now the people trust them to be on their property while they're not home, and then come December, you know, he has a client list of 40, he doesn't get, he doesn't win the lottery.
Uh, the last sentence for item number one, previous permit holders will be given preference.
So, so it's not really a lottery every year, then?
Well, it is for any, any new people, so the first year, all three slots are open, it's a lottery.
So say we get three.
Okay, we get three, the following year.
We want two more that wanna join.
But if the first three stay with it?
So, the only opening is if somebody drops out.
Right, exactly.
If we were to, they, I think you kinda arbitrarily put three, cause it sounds like a good number, we could decide we want it to be four or five.
We could increase the number, yes, exactly, we could increase it, but at least.
No, no, I just don't want the guy to establish a business, and the blues on it, because he didn't win the lottery.
Right, and that's what we thought of as well, but i- if the permit holder is working out, there's no complaints, that's why it's only given preference and not a guarantee, because, let's say we have someone with a permit for the first year, but, you know, they get spoken to a lot by the transfer station, they kinda try to slide things, and they may not be someone we want to renew a permit for, so there's no guarantee, but they will be given preference, meaning if they're a good, um, if they're good for the town, then they get to keep their permit for the next year.
I just have an issue with how many bags they can bring each time they go, five times?
Whatever can fit in a pickup truck that they list.
Right, but it's not a regular pickup truck, you're gonna be able to build the sides up to the top of the roof of the truck.
How big is yours, Bob?
Now, keep in mind, it's also a class one through three pickup.
My pickup truck's a six-foot bed, I put four-foot sides on it, so it's level with the cab of my truck, I guarantee I can put at least 60 to 70 bags in it.
However.
So they can bring 700 bags a week?
They're not gonna be putting four-foot.
Wait, being an eight-foot truck, you can put more bags.
Four-foot high walls would put you over the cab.
Right, this says that the sides can be no higher than the roof of the cab.
Right.
So that's one and a half, two.
That's not a four-foot side.
Alright, I'd like to have somebody put a truck there, put the sides on it, and see how many bags we can fit in it, before we agree to that amount of bags.
Okay.
You'd be surprised how many bags you can fit in that size of pickup truck.
That's why it's before the board, and not being implemented.
I mean, I'm just saying, we should, if somebody's interested, they wanna do it, put the sides equal to the cab, the roof of the truck, see how many trash bags we can put in that truck.
I mean, I would keep it even simpler than that, I would just say that, if you're gonna do it, you have to essentially submit your truck to us, to inspect it, you know what I mean, we have to see, if you're coming in with a F-150, and we look at the F-150, it's fine, okay, great, if all of a sudden you show up one day, and you've gotten a new truck, or you've altered your truck, then we have the right to say, no, you can't do that anymore.
All pickup trucks have basically got the same side bed, whether they're six-foot or eight-foot, the same, it's gonna be the same height from the floor to the roof, whether it's a half-ton, three-quarter-ton, one-ton pickup. What I'm saying is, you have the option of going five times on a Tuesday, three trucks, that's gonna be an awful lot of bags to put in those trucks, that's why I'm saying we should, before we make a limit of how many trips, and the size of the, the size of the truck, let's see how many bags fitting there, before we make that decision.
Do we have anybody who has a?
Oh, I think if somebody wants, wants to do it, it should be up to them to show us how many bags they can fit in their truck.
I was just gonna say, I, I drive a Ranger, I can probably fit.
Well, yours would fit in the back of the truck.
I know, I can fit like 30.
Ah.
And you don't have sides in your truck.
No.
But then again, are we talking about kitchen 13-gallon size, are we talking 30-gallon in the back? I'm just asking what size bags we're talking about here.
We, we went with our gross vehicle weight to maximize, um.
But that can be worked out later on, anyway.
Because you, we have to be very careful as far as, you know, what vehicle can or cannot be allowed to bring in household waste, because then it could be seen that you're actually discriminating against one person versus another, whereas if you specify based on gross vehicle weight and the height of the side rails, then there's no discrimi, it's the same for everyone, you can't say, um, a Ford F-150, or a Chevy 350, or two.
No, that's why I said.
We can't do that.
You get a Ford F-150, you get a Chevy half-ton, the beds are basically the same size within inches.
Yep, and that's why we went with the, we looked at classifications of pickup trucks, and we chose one, so that it would not be a big diesel box, you know, dump truck, you know, they can't bring a dump truck, or that sort of a truck into the transfer station, because that's over that gross vehicle weight.
Yeah, you know, I, I don't have as much of an issue with this, and Lisa made a good point earlier, just now, that, uh, this is all about gathering data and trying something, so if all of a sudden we're a month into this, and we're getting calls from the transfer station that somebody's abusing it, we can rewrite it.
Exactly.
Yep.
That's actually one of the reasons that, in number one, um, previous permit holders would be given preference, it's also at the end of the year, okay, you have a permit holder who has two infractions.
Right, right.
And we.
That's number eight.
Well, they weren't quite bad enough individually to get their permit revoked, we can look at them and go, you know, it's the end of the year, it's the, technically the end of your contract or your permit, we're not renewing.
Yeah, exactly.
Uh-uh, that's what I said initially, preference, no guarantee.
I'm, I'm willing to bet that Lisa and I collectively and individually have probably spent 60, 70 hours working on this.
Yeah, I mean, and, and it's.
Doing the research, and.
Yeah, it's, it's appreciated, when I read this, I was like, yeah, they've, you know, you start asking questions to yourself, and you answered it, you know what I mean, so you guys have, have done a lot of work on this, so I wanna, you know, respect that as well, but, again, I, I'll say it.
This isn't sacred script, if anybody has something that they would like.
Oh, no way, yeah, but I, I mean, I'll say it, I'll say it again, this is about gathering data, so, if, if we have to change it on the fly, we're reserving the right to do so, and, and, and we will, and, and if we decide to move forward after the pilot, I'm, I'm relatively sure we're gonna have something we can rely on.
Yeah, and I'm relatively sure that, when the pilot is over, we're going to have adjustments to the policy, I, I'm relatively sure of that, but to address Bob's concern, for example, he's concerned about 10 loads a week, which is like five loads on a Tuesday, five loads on a Thursday, um, it does limit them to only Tuesdays and Thursdays, and only from the time of opening till one hour prior to closing, so they do have that limit in that window, and those, only those two days, in order to drop off household waste. Now, this was feedback from the transfer station manager, as to when it would create the least impact to the transfer station, and, you know, are these bins gonna get full, and then, you know, so that's where, where that comes into play, but as a pilot program, we could limit it to five loads per week, you know, because it's a pilot program, they're not, whoever, you know, whether it's one, two, or three individuals decide to, um, take advantage of the pilot program, they're not gonna have 100 customers immediately, it's gonna take them time to even build up a customer base, so, limiting it during the pilot phase, I'm okay with that, too, cause again, we can go through it and say, alright, well, you know what, um, we, we get the permit holders coming back to us and saying, look, you know, these five loads per week, I'm only able to do 10, 20, whatever customers it is he's able to do, i- it's not even something that I could make money at, so why would I even do it?
Right, some people are gonna, gonna figure that out, you know?
Exactly.
Cause, what I'm, what I'm thinking for the next step is, we put something out there, via the website, to solicit interested parties who wanna be part of the pilot, you know, no, no promises at that point, and then they come in and meet with whoever is gonna manage this pilot, which I'm gonna assume the transfer station manager is, is one, one party, and then, they kinda, you know, whatever feedback those interested parties are gonna give, and we can entertain whatever feedback we want to, you know, put into this, and then we pick the start date, and we pick the length, and we just go and do it, and, uh, cause you guys have put a lot of work into this, obviously, but it has been almost a year since this was on the ballot, so I, I'd like to be able to tell the public that, you know, this is, it's been a year, but we're, we're starting this, because obviously people were interested, and I, I think, where I'm going is, I think we have enough to start right now.
At least to, um, solicit potential.
Which is a start, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Pilots.
So where, where would that $500 be?
It's not a motion, but I'm just, you know.
Oh, that was my question, would the 500 go into the transfer station special revenue fund, with fees collected?
Yeah, I would think so.
That would be the improved 3FR for this, and insurance, are you gonna require a $1 million liability, it's not like you're working on town property or anything.
What do you mean not working, they're delivering?
They're not like plowing for the town, they're not representing the town.
No, 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 it's the, it says with appropriate commercial liability insurance.
We have to know that if they run over one of our buildings, they're gonna pay for it, if they back into one of our.
They're not working for the town.
Doesn't matter, they, they have to have liability insurance.
On, on the vehicles that are coming into the transfer station, they need to have the appropriate liability insurance, in case they back into our compressors, or run over our shack, girl.
So devil's advocate here, do we verify that for every resident in town?
Yeah, all the, we have certificates of insurance for all.
No.
He's saying, like, if you go to the transfer station, you don't, in theory, in New Hampshire, you don't need insurance.
I don't think we can force them to have a million-dollar liability insurance.
Well, we could, we could, if we want to.
I didn't say a million dollar, and yes, we can.
But here's, here's the point I'm making, is that I could do that tomorrow with my truck, exactly what you, I could back into the compressor at the transfer station. You guys don't have my insurance on file, I don't need to have insurance, I could be driving in New Hampshire without insurance.
But you're not making money doing it.
I think it's different for a business.
So you're not coming in as often as a commercial hauler would be, so your chances of.
You never know.
Damaging.
But, but I think, I think what I'm getting at is, is Larry's question, we can, we can make them get whatever we want them to get, but, um, the, the reason for doing so might be a little different than we're thinking, but we can certainly make this requirement.
And when I say appropriate commercial liability insurance, this is why we didn't put a dollar amount, we may require, uh, the plow drivers to have a million-dollar, uh, insurance policy on their vehicles.
In case we hit a million-dollar mailbox.
But, for the commercial haulers, it might be 500,000.
Well, we hire plumbers, electricians, that's what they need, a million dollars.
But see, I think where it comes.
This guy's working for himself, not for the town.
Right, but I think where it puts us on the, in the lawsuit if something happens, is they're paying us to be able to do it, so somehow the town's tied into this lawsuit.
Right, they're paying us to.
If somebody, if they run somebody over at the transfer station.
So, let's assume one of their employees, it's not a single person, you know, maybe they hire somebody to do this for them, and their employee gets injured, or whatever, slips off their truck, but they were on the, at the transfer station, there would be some sort of, if they, there wasn't the appropriate insurance, they'd be coming after the town, I don't, I doubt they'd succeed, but it's possible.
Well, they would, because again, we're paying the town to be able to do this, so the town is gonna be part of that pocket of the lawsuit.
So, having the appropriate insurance is required.
And then if they do have employees, now do they need workman's comp filed with the town, because they're using the town, they're getting permits from the town, they use the town.
Not if the employee is related.
So every, everybody gets invited to the lawsuit, that doesn't mean everybody has to stay, is what I always say.
Right.
Jim?
I figured, I'm asking to be recognized, um, please note the way that that is written, it says appropriate commercial liability insurance, all small, all small letters, no caps, there's more than just the potential of accident liability, part of that, the package of appropriate commercial liability insurance is, if I have an employee, one of my liabilities is workman's comp, this is protecting not just the town when they go to the transfer station, but this is protecting the town residents, since this is falling under an umbrella, in which the town could be the deep pockets, we're requiring them to do things that, when, we wouldn't require somebody in town who's doing plowing.
Right, right.
But because.
We have deep pockets.
Technically.
Taxpayers.
Yeah.
Understood.
People think the taxpayers have a deep pockets.
So, um, yeah, so that's where, I mean, I, I think what we have on the page in front of us is enough, is enough to go the next step, which is soliciting interested parties, so.
Do we have an application, or just a letter of interest, or?
I think a letter of interest is enough at this point.
Yeah, well, I mean, there's no sense in trying to draft up a specific application, yeah, you know, a permit application until we actually, it's a pilot.
So, so Steve, I know you've been here, and you're proponent of being one of the interested parties, did you wanna share anything, or? Long as you're, long as you've been waiting for the last hour.
I, no, I, I think it was, I, I mean, I appreciate all the time and effort that Lisa and Jim put into, I, I would just say that it's a very well-thought-out proposal, and, you know, um, I appreciate the consideration, so, that's it.
Is there any way you can tell us how many bags you can fit?
I, I wish I could, I, I, I mean. I wish I could, I, I, I mean, truthfully speaking, in my own head, I've been wondering something similar, because for you, it's a limitation issue. For somebody, an interested party, it's how many, how much money can I make, you know?
Right, my thing is, if you have a truck there unloading 80 bags, it's going to kill the hopper. And you're going to have people in town waiting to get in there that, they're going to be waiting because the hopper's going to get jammed up, because somebody's trying to dump 80 bags into a hopper, they can only handle four at a time without jamming.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't really, I don't think we have an answer for that. I do think that five loads of, I mean, when you think about a pickup truck with no sidewalls, this is about as low as you can go in that capacity. So building up the sidewalls to the, it's not, it's still not a very big amount when you factor in where we started talking about trailers and, I mean, it was never in the plan, but this is not, I mean, that, that amount was well discussed, and, and, you know, 60, 70, 80 trash bags, it's possible that that could fit in to a bed of a truck with the sidewalls built up, but I don't know that that's too many for the transfer station. I'm obviously in favor of not limiting it. They've obviously been in favor of limiting it, you know, to cover the town, and I think that that, that number was as well thought out as it could have been.
The thing I keep going back to, and a pilot might prove me wrong, but, but to me, it's about volume, and with what you've described here, should not change the volume of trash that we get at the transfer station on a weekly basis. Now, you might get it in a more, you might get it in an hour rather than six hours, right? But the...
There's 25 cars, you're going to have one truck.
Right, and it almost might help with the traffic, you know what I mean? But the, again, that's why you do a pilot, right? Because maybe I'm totally wrong, but that's what I've been thinking through this whole process, is it's actually because of the fact, you can't, you can't bring in trash from Haverhill, you can't bring in trash from Amesbury. It's people that already have access to the transfer station, they just, for whatever reason, and what I hear from the people who are usually in favor, the elderly, or it's people who don't have a pickup truck. So ideally, the volume would remain the same, but...
And it could even be the seasonal people, the ones who have to leave on Fridays, you know?
Yeah, that's a good point, too, yeah.
They get the tag where they can bring it, but, you know, so it would maybe be for their convenience to actually use them instead of, you know what I mean? So...
Considering the fact that at one time in town, we had several, I'm sure Sluckman Donovan, remember, fully mottened, who, these people had eight-foot sheets of plywood on the sides of the, and create these huge boxes. We're not permitting that.
Right, right.
A rather restrictive, it's going to be through the parameters of these guidelines, and any, if anybody else has guidelines that they would like to suggest, please get them to us ASAP.
Right.
This will restrict it, it will, it should still be a moneymaker for those people while keeping it small and in town.
Because it's going to, it's going to come to the fact, at the end of the pilot, we might have our people at the transfer station saying, this is impossible to manage, and it's not worth the revenue that we get out of it. That might happen, but we, I want to at least give it a shot and see what happens, because, like I said, we might all of a sudden find, hey, you know, it's, we've actually alleviated traffic down there, because it's just this, this one guy in a truck on Tuesdays and Thursdays that spends the most time, huh?
And the things that we had discussed during our looking into this project is, we don't know the full impact of it. Until a pilot program is initiated, we're not going to know the full impact. We may find that if we do use three people and 10 loads, or whatever the case may be, we might actually need a hopper just for them.
True.
You know, if these three individuals, or whatever, are able to build up such a clientele that they're actually bringing in that much, we may need to bring in another hopper. If we need to bring in another hopper, then we need to adjust our permit fee to cover the cost of that hopper.
Right, make it cost effective.
Exactly, because the one thing I don't want to happen, and isn't going to happen, is this is not going to cost the taxpayers money to allow this to happen. So if we need to bring in another hopper, or if we need to bring in another attendant, you know, just to manage them on Tuesdays and Thursdays, or, anything that's going to cost the taxpayers needs to be transferred to the actual commercial haulers.
Was this, was this any consideration, since I had to get onto the transfer station because both packers froze up one day? What are we going to do when both packers freeze up one day and you got three trucks sitting there with 80 bags in them each?
The same thing you do with the residents is say, I'm sorry, I can't go there. The one thing we will not do is allow commercial haulers to drop off their load and leave.
Yeah, right.
Okay, whereas with a resident, we'd be apt to let them drop off their four or five bags and, you know...
Okay, but we need to add that into the...
And see, that's why we're here, so that we can definitely do. If there are mechanical issues preventing the acceptance of them, then the load cannot be dropped off. Of course, we could also be proactive and actually notify these people, since we're going to know who the permit holders are, and say, hey, by the way, there's an issue with the compactor or whatever.
Don't come today.
Don't come today, you know? So we would have to also do that, I think.
Were you just raising your hand? I don't, no, you were scratching?
Yep.
But yes, I agree, that is something that should be included in here, Bob, and we can definitely add that.
It's a good add.
It is a good add.
So what does the board think about at least moving forward with the solicitation of interested parties to sit down and talk about their interest?
Might I suggest that we give the three of you two weeks in which to submit to us in writing anything that you want to see changed, or you have major questions about, so that we can address it.
We could.
Because I really don't want to put an ad out there and find out that this is going to get totally rewritten, and we have to have it done in three weeks before, just saying...
Right, I mean, and we could certainly do that, but Lisa actually sent this out three weeks ago.
Right.
And I read it, and I don't, I don't have anything.
I'm fine with starting with what's on there.
And, and I don't have a problem if we start with what's on there. The people have to understand, and Steve will probably be an interested party, the interested parties have to understand that this is a moving target, like...
It's a living document.
It's a living document. So we might, we might all of a sudden change, and that's, that's what you sign up for when you sign up for the pilot. You're not signing up for...
So we will go like, from now to December? I mean, if we get three applicants and whatever, whatever?
Well, I would...
You're going to wait till December, so, before you let them start.
Well, I would, I'm, I'm just spitballing, but I think we should have, maybe by the end of February, have letters of interest from people. And then in March, we're talking to people about when we're going to start it. Maybe it's April 1st, a start date, and then, then, I don't know, is that long enough? Maybe it's too long, you know, you know what I mean? Like, you almost have to, three months might not be long enough, for example, to find out what you want to find out, you know? Maybe, maybe December is long enough, I don't know.
I think you have to at least go, at least till December to let them at least compensate for the money that they're spending to start it.
Yeah, and that's a factor.
Because they have to pay for insurance.
Yep.
Hopefully, they already have their truck.
Right.
In that case, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we adopt these as the parameters for a pilot study.
Right.
We can work on format later, because you can't put an ad out unless you can give people the parameters.
Is that all part of the motion? Is that all part of the motion?
No, the motion is that we adopt these as the parameters for a pilot study.
Okay.
A study or a program?
Uh...
Does it matter? I don't know if it matters.
It would be a program.
Yeah, a pilot program.
Okay, it would be a program, okay.
All right, is there a second on that discussion?
I want to make sure that we do add Bob's concern about...
Oh, yeah, yeah. Also, it happens a lot, one of the hoppers is full, now you're down to one hopper, we're still going to allow trucks pulling in there, and, you know, there's other things to consider.
It's, I think if the way you kind of said it out loud, any mechanical issues would limit, you know, the, sort of a catch-all phrase that says, we're going to, we're going to tell you, you could show up, and we're going to tell you, because of a mechanical issue, you're not going to be able to dump that day, as we'd tell anybody. I think that'll be fine.
Well, yeah, it'd be the same as any other business, sorry, we lost power, you can't come in.
Right.
Which, all of this, it would be set up exactly the same as if you were a resident. If you were a resident and you went there and it was full, then, sorry.
Yeah, we don't tell residents, sorry, we accommodate for them, we either use a dumpster or we let them set it there.
Oh, yeah, that's true, that's true, yeah.
There is a difference.
So how, how will you get the notifications out to the residents? Is that an advertisement in the paper?
That's their problem.
That's their problem, yeah.
That, that, that's not the motion, that's...
Yeah, let's finish the motion. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
I'm just against it, I don't think we should be doing it, but...
Okay, so the only thing I would say is with, if, if we're going out there to, to get interest in, you know, people who are working in this, I don't, I don't think we necessarily have to publish this to garner interest. If we're just looking for letters of interest, once, we could, we could have an ad, and I'll write it if I have to, but the, the ad could basically say, if you're interested in the pilot program for commercial trash hauling, please send a letter of interest by such and such a date. Once we have the letters, and we might end up with two people, you know?
Yeah, hey, I don't want to be paying for any advertisements, I'm good with...
Oh, no way, yeah, yeah.
Let's just post something on the website and call it a day.
Just, just the website, or if, I don't know, Carriage Town is even free, but we could do that, but the website is fine.
No, it's not.
Yeah, we're not placing paid ads anywhere.
Yeah, we're not placing paid ads for this.
But you do it, you do it on the website, and then people send the letters of interest, then at that point, you start reviewing this with them. I don't think we necessarily need to...
And anyone who's signed up for email notifications from the site will get it in an email.
Yep, exactly. All right, so that was four to one, and I think we're done with this topic, right?
And so, all right, so at this point, now it's, we'll get something on the website, soliciting letters of interest. We will need to build this into a pilot program guideline, if you will, and before we can let them do it, we'll also need to work with the transfer station to get them prepared, because we can't just, you know, say, okay, we've got the 500 bucks, go for it. We need the transfer station prepared for it as well. So the letter of interest, it, maybe, probably in March or something, we can come back and say, okay, this is our working document at this point.
Yep, absolutely.
You know, this is what the transfer station's going to do, because they are going to need to set up something.
Larry's ready to move on over here.
All right, I'm just making sure that we understand this is not happening tomorrow.
Yeah, I, I think the ad should get out there as soon as possible, and we should have a February 28th end date, but yeah, it's not...
Free ads only.
Absolutely. Steve, anything you wanted to mention before we...
Nope, just thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. All right, we're moving on.
Nancy.
What?
Harassment training?
I'm still...
Harassment training? Anyone?
So we just sent out a memo to everybody, all employees, that the Primex is going to be here February 28th?
28.
Thank you. To go over the sexual, not, just harassment training, not specific.
So this started with the fire department requesting that we have one, I guess his other job, they did it every year, we try to do it every other year. And with Primex, we now have the option, if, and I think in the past, the board always mandated that the employees had to come to this, but you had some people who might work at night or whatever, so we were able to get a webinar from Primex. We asked if we could record this and let the people watch it, and they said, no, they have their own webinar online, and they could do that. I think part of the confusion was, is a lot of people don't want to come here, so they're, they're saying, I'll take the webinar. That's not the point, and I wanted to get the board's opinion on this. The idea is for them to come to the meeting that night, and if the department head decides that they have other commitments... I don't know who's doing it.
Diane, caught in trouble?
If the department head can allow the person, because they have another job or something that they have to attend to, then they can give them the right to go on and do the webinar. It wouldn't be open for whoever wants to do the webinar instead of coming here. We're asking these people to come down, we want as many people to come to the meeting as possible. Webinar is a follow-up, and I just wanted to know if the board agrees with that, because I guess there's been some issues with some of the departments. The police department has decided to hold their own and maybe do the webinar as a group like they do on their training night. So they, some of the employees have the option of going to that meeting or coming to the town hall for this meeting, and I think we need to try and get them at these meetings rather than them sitting at home, because everybody gets paid to take this training. To sit at home and do a webinar may not always be in the best interest of the town or the employee.
Why does that sound familiar?
Well, this is the way I've set it up right from the beginning. And I think, you know, we talked about maybe doing three questions, if somebody takes the webinar and they would have to answer three questions, that way we know they took it at home.
Does the webinar include some kind of an email notification of completion?
I don't know, Diane, it does, okay, because Diane was going to check.
They have this certificate.
Well, if you get a certificate, you don't have to ask the questions.
Then that's sufficient, and I, right, right, well, we were checking on that, we weren't sure.
Okay, and I do want to say that for my day job, that's exactly what I do. It's all webinar.
Right, but if there's no...
No, all of them, my harassment policies, my security policies.
So you work at home?
Well, no, even in the office, even in the, everyone, company-wide webinar. You take, they give you an end date for you to complete it, and then you take whatever time during your day to complete it. That way, you're not trying to schedule time outside your normal working schedule to do this.
You get the certificate at the end of it without going through the whole thing?
No.
Okay.
No, you cannot, you don't get it.
You have questions in between, you have to answer?
And if, yes.
Well, I think we need to know how the board feels about this, if we're mandating people to come.
Basically, I, me personally, and I understand this is a, for most everybody, this is a part-time job, if, if you could even call it a part-time job for some people, I would, I think we did this last go-around, I would strongly encourage everybody to attend in person, like, I'll, I'll put this on my calendar right now. But if, like you said, the department head, I think, is probably a good, you know, decision-maker on whether this person just absolutely can't make it, then we can give them the webinar. But, but the webinar kind of doesn't, I don't think people should have access to the webinar until at least March 1st, you know? I think they should be, we should be taking it on the 28th and...
Right, right, and we want to be able to put something into their folder, you know, the sign-up sheet or whatever, showing that they took it.
Yeah, because you're right, everybody's going to take the webinar. I think if, if they had access to the webinar, I think everybody's going to take it, but it's, it's not...
But we also have a problem, as a rule, getting people to show up for our training sessions.
Right.
Whereas the webinar, there's no excuse to complete it. And the important thing is completing the training.
Yep.
Now, webinar trainings do have...
Whereas the webinar, there's no excuse to complete it. And the important thing is completing the training.
Yep.
Now, webinar trainings do have, these are the scenarios, what would you do, you know, and you have questions and answers-
You have to answer questions.
That you have to answer, and you actually get scored. And if you don't score high enough, you fail the seminar. Now, I don't know if this one-
Yeah, we, we haven't seen this one, so we're not sure.
Probably is. They're all, they're all very similar.
Pretty much the same now.
Are they? Okay.
Because they have, it, it, it has to be a effective replacement for the in-person thing. James, you have your hand up.
Oh, I, I was just gonna say, I think the first thing, first and foremost, they should have their butts in these seats. The webinar should only be for those who have a truly legitimate reason, because if we're gonna pay somebody to sit there and watch a webinar-
Right.
-we have no way of verifying it.
Yeah.
Three questions, what have you. I'm assuming this is similar to the one that we had a couple of years ago, on sexual harassment.
We don't have time for this here. Ten bucks, take the test.
Yeah, we keep redoing it. Once you've attended a couple of them-
But if they're doing the webinar at their desk, then we're not actually paying them to be checking their phones, or, which they could do with their butts sitting right in the seat and only sticking their head up when, hey, there's a question. Whereas, the other way, whereas with the webinar, you're guaranteed everyone is answering the question individually.
So, I think-
In work, in work in the city, we have to take our ethical one, about taking gifts is illegal. They allow us to do it online. It goes to the state of Massachusetts, not to the city. We print out a certificate and we turn it into, to the, to the-
Yeah, even my youth protection training for scouts is done online.
Yes, they had it.
So-
But they paid attention to that.
Do you, I think we're all just saying the same thing over and over, but, all right, do you have what you need now? So, we're gonna, we're gonna strongly encourage everybody to come on that date and time, but if not-
Do the webinar.
-the department head will be able to share the webinar with other people, and then we need to know, you know, pick a date, maybe it's March after the 13th, let's make it, so I don't have to be involved, but-
Well, you can probably put it on a website, right?
And, and we need to know after that date, who has not taken it, because we need to, this is a liability for the town, so if people are gonna constantly just ignore this, we need to know who those people are, because we need to make sure the department head, you know, if the department head needs to call them into the office one day, and sit them in a chair and log into their computer, they're gonna do it, so. So, this, this, Police and Fire, would they be coming on this night as well?
Police would prefer to do it on their training night, and they'll have all of their employees there, and they've also-
As long as they're doing something like that.
They've also offered to let any of the fire department or whatever who can't make it on our night to go there as well.
Now, does it cost money to do the webinar?
They're gonna get paid whether they're-
Oh, no, I'm saying, are we gonna pay somebody to be here that night, and then the police department's paying for the webinar the same night?
Yeah, everyone has to get paid.
It's their training night.
No, no, the training, is it-
Is there a cost for the webinar?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
I don't, yeah, I don't think so.
I think the PD's gonna do the webinar.
And is there a cost?
It's under our coverage.
Is there a cost for the instructor to come here?
Right, I'm just saying, if we're paying the lady to be here for a hundred dollars, and then the PD's paying 50 for the webinar-
It's our, it's our coverage.
No, you come with us.
So, Bob, there is no cost for the instructor or the webinar?
Yes, we just forgot that.
Okay.
Jim's waving again.
Just, just one note is, this is supervisors as well as employees.
Oh, yeah. Yep.
Supervisors are employees.
We're all gonna be there, right?
I realize that, but the way, the way the conversation is going, you know, supervisor could, you know, forgive an employee for not attending-
And could be on the list as well.
-so that they could take the webinar. It sounded like we were making two classes. This is everybody that works for the town of Newton, period.
The volunteers as well.
Exactly.
So, you're saying every employee now, does that mean plow drivers, because they're employees of the town?
They're not employees, they're contractors.
They're subcontractors.
That's a little different.
All right.
But yeah, it's, so, like, every member of the rec commission would have to, right?
Yeah, they should, yeah.
Every member of the planning board, CBA, whatever.
Conservation, et cetera, et cetera.
So, so we have a plan, so we can move forward with that, and Will, I'll be here, right, on February 28th at 6:00 PM, right in this room, and Larry's gonna bring coffee, so.
Want us to get some snacks or something, you know?
What, are you kidding?
Right.
Only like an hour and a half, right?
Yeah.
Wouldn't be a, wouldn't be a bad thing to get a plate of cookies or brownies or whatever, and-
Water.
Maybe that'll actually get some people to come.
I think we'd be saving money having them do the webinar.
Local government used to bring all that, I don't think Primex does.
Just to throw another wrench in, excuse me, the comment I just made.
I think we'd save money having them do the webinar instead of posting hours of cookies and-
If you have an employee that's gonna be here, they get paid. What about all the recreation, all those guys have to be here and they don't get paid? That's just-
Budget.
Right, I just think it's, you know, you're, I'm sitting next to somebody that's getting paid to be here, and I'm not, and he is, but he isn't.
But it's, it is, you know, on its face, it's unfair, but it actually, if you think about it, it happens all year long, because there are rec commission activities such as cleaning up the beach or cleaning up the park, the-
The only difference is we're mandating them.
Not mandatory to be there.
The mandate, you gotta pay.
If you tell them, "You have to be here," there's gotta be some compensation.
Maybe it would just be the paid people, but-
Why, we're mandating we have to be here and we're not getting paid for it.
We're on a stipend.
We're doing it for the glory.
Recreation, conservation, we're saying, "You have to be here," how do we-
Didn't mandate, you said you strongly encouraged.
No, I-
But what happens if they don't come?
If you're an employee, you were mandated. If you're a volunteer, you're strongly encouraged.
That's what we're talking about.
Right, but if the volunteer, recreation, planning board, they don't come-
You strongly encouraged them.
You, you can't, you can't demand an elected official attend.
Yeah, the, basically, if you're pulling a paycheck from the town, you have to be here.
Complete the, complete the webinar.
If you're a board member that, you know-
You can only encourage.
Yeah, I guess that's the way we have to do it.
This email we sent out, a memo that we sent out, says, "Required, strongly encouraged."
Right, that's how we have to do it, I think.
Yeah.
But, all right, can we move on from this one?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
So, we're on to G, request for interest refund.
So, we have two people who are requesting just their interest payments be returned. One, one was due to a medical issue that was in the hospital, and the other one, I think the bill got lost going to the bank. The bank supposedly sent it, but it didn't get here, so we did do, it's on an abatement form, however, it's really a refund.
Yeah, because they've already paid.
So, this was a post office situation, again?
I think, I think it was the bank that sent the check supposedly, but the town clerk, tax collector never got it, so they were strongly encouraged to pay the full bill, and we would ask the board if they would refund the-
I was just gonna say, on, on this one, the, the one where the, the gentleman who was in the hospital, okay, that's, that's major extenuating circumstances. The other one, where the bank appears not to have sent the check, or who knows where they sent it, that's not our-
But this woman states that she's paid her bill that way for 30 years, and it's not her fault that this time it didn't get here.
No, it's her bank's fault, and they're the ones who should be paying.
Well, she's asking the board, so-
So, let's, let's do this one at a time.
We can do the-
The first one, and just so the public knows, I'm not mentioning the name, but it's $18.61, right?
And I would move to refund that.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Bob, one.
Do we, do we need-
We have to say the map number, right?
It would be helpful, yes.
Jim, you wanna add the map number to your-
Uh, yeah, hold on a second.
Map 13 lot 2 sub 14 dash 2.
Yep, 13, 13 to 14 dash 2.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the next one is the bank issue.
And that is on lot 7 dash 3 dash 28 dash-
And this is for $41.81?
Right. I'm sorry, I just read that, and it sounded like quite possibly the bank didn't send it out.
Keep in mind, this does not read like it is the mortgage company that sends it out every month, but it sounds like a bank bill pay situation. She went online and used her bank's bill pay service.
Wait a second. The person says, "I have been successfully using this method for three years or more with no changes, and in 17 have never made a late payment to our town." She didn't make, it's her bank that-
No, 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 no. This, this is her payment. She used, this person used the bill pay feature-
Feature, right.
-from their bank. So, technically, she is, or she, he, whoever, is the one that paid. She said, they set it up, something happened and it didn't go out quite as planned. Now, the bank in question may say, "Well, that's not our responsibility. You should have made sure that you allowed some leeway and we're not responsible."
Yeah, there's nothing on here.
If this is a taxpayer that is known for being prompt with payment, this is a one-time scenario, I have no problem with forgiving that one time.
Yeah, I, I think, based on what I've read here, and just, you know, so everybody knows, $41.81, and this, this sounds like, that's coincidence, huh? The, this sounds like it's, it's something that's-
An oversight.
An oversight, and I don't think there'll be a run on us for, for this type of treatment, so I think if, I know how I'm gonna vote if somebody wants to make a motion.
Did Jim make the motion already?
He did not.
He didn't?
No.
I will move that we refund the $41.83 to the owners of map 7 block 3 lot 28 dash 2.
And it's 81 cents, just so we don't give you two extra cents. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, great.
And just so we know, the bank actually does say they sent it on 12:15, which means five days prior to it was due.
Who knows?
The bank-
Yeah.
Showed it did.
All right, so, we're on to H, was update on Sanborn School Board Joint Meeting. So, I wanted to put the feeler out there, because I did talk to the chair, still some interest in meeting. I did tell them that the original invitation to meet was to do it before the public hearings and deliberatives and stuff, so we missed that boat. So, their thing, and I totally agree with them, is they don't want to meet unless we have a set agenda and it makes sense to meet. We don't want to, they don't want to meet for the sake of meeting, which I totally agree with. So, I want to put the bug in your ear to think of potential agenda items. So, what I'll do is I'll send you guys all an email to remind you, but if you could send me anything you'd be interested in for an agenda, then if we decide we have an agenda, the, the available dates are the second and fourth week Wednesdays of April, so we have some time to think about this.
Okay.
So, but that's all I wanted to do on that one. All right.
Candidate's night.
Comcast has a, we have a memo for the franchise fee, a letter to the bookkeeper. It basically-
I'll, I'll mute if you'd like.
Okay, got it?
Go ahead.
This will come from the Board of Selectmen to our bookkeeper. On March 12th, 2013, a warrant out of this oven was established to, was passed to establish a revolving fund for the purposes of providing cable access for public educational government use. The Board of Selectmen received a cable franchise fee check dated February 1st, 2018, in the amount of $24,626.56 for the months of October, November, and December of 2017, which is 5% of the total revenue received of $492,529.72. Of this amount, 5% or $2,462.66 goes into the cable revolving fund, and $22,163.90, or 4.5% of that total revenue, stays within the town of Newton. Please prepare a check in the amount of $2,462.66 to go into the cable revolving fund. With this amount to come from the unassigned fund balance from the cable revenues received in 2016, I think that's supposed to be 2017. Thank you for your attention in this matter, and should you have any questions, please contact Nancy Wrigley, Town Administrator, with her telephone number.
No, we don't have that letter.
Right here. So, this is something, we do this annually, right? This is the-
Quarterly.
Quarterly. So, we basically need this official-
Yep, it gives-
-letter, so we can get our money.
Gives the bookkeeper the right to transfer the funds.
Right. Yeah, the only thing is, I, we, I think we use a pretty firm letter, however, the revenues were received in 2017, not 2016.
Yep.
So, that's a typo on here.
That's to be right, it's a typo.
So, I will move that we sign this once it has been corrected.
What?
Second?
Once it's corrected?
The date has been corrected.
You can mark it, Jim, you can change the year, because it's on the manifest, we, we need to-
Oh, okay.
We need to do this.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And kind of like on the warrant, people should know, this costs the taxpayer $0 per thousand, because this is coming from Comcast into the town. So, announcements? Nothing else, right, on the agenda?
No, um, let's see, where did this fall in?
I'll, I'll do the announcements, because they're right here.
Okay, announcements is prior to?
Yeah, I will announce that on 1/30/2018, the board signed the vendor manifest in the amount, also, that was dated for 1/30/2018, in the amount of $1,049,771, of which $1 million went to the February school, Sanborn Regional School Board District payment. And also announce that on January 30th, 2018, the board signed the new fire rescue manifest in the amount of $58,399.25.
Candidate's night, what, is the-
February 26th.
What time, 7?
7:00 PM for any candidate that would like to attend, including schools, for the school.
February 26th?
Even if they're not contested, right?
That is correct.
Okay.
All candidates invited.
Okay. Was there any thought of moving it a little earlier in the night?
What time was it?
Seven o'clock.
The only reason I say that is because, speaking from past experience, the night gets away from you, and it could end up being a late night if it starts at 7.
Well, so far, I haven't gotten anybody coming to the candidate's night anyway, so-
Okay.
You have a moderator.
I told you.
I have a moderator, that's right.
I told you I was coming.
I told you I was coming.
You said you marked your calendars, but that doesn't mean-
Yes, it does.
That's as good, that's as good as coming.
All right, so you two are definitely coming, okay.
Now, who's the moderator?
Please inform Diane and Brian.
Brian Seacrest, please, on that book.
Well, no, voicemail would work.
So, that, that's my only suggestion, because, and it, it seems like 6 is too early, but 6:30 is kind of like right.
What time is it?
It's all, it's the cable committee will decide. It's all, it's the cable committee will decide.
I'm going to put 6.
Put it for 7.
That way I won't be late.
Okay.
Okay, so everybody knows that, and plus, we encourage people to come so they can ask questions, but it'll be on TV as well, right?
Right, we need that speaker.
Right.
Come here on line 2.
Just like Larry King or something. And appointments, Conservation Commission, we have an appointment?
Yes, we do. I thought we were going to have a reappointment as well. Did we not get that?
No, we only had that one name.
Okay, so we'll get that one next time. The Conservation Commission is recommending that the Board of Selectmen appoint Molly Wilson to the Conservation Commission. So I will move to appoint Molly Wilson to the Conservation Commission, starting April 1st, no, let's see. Yes.
Starting now.
Which shall be at midnight on the, why does this say first day of April 2019?
That's the expiration date.
Okay, so she's a one-year, because we're actually getting an extra person now. Got it.
All right, second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
So, now this can go to the...
The only one you had?
Yep, just the one.
Okay, so...
So she can get sworn in.
While we're under announcements, I'll just throw it out there, for those who didn't participate or have a chance to in the deliberative, that was Saturday, this past Saturday, it's on video on demand, right? They can watch it on TV, and all the materials are out on our website, too, so if they want...
Videos on the website as well.
Videos on the website, they can read the warrant, and there's also a voter's guide that goes into a little further explanation on what the votes mean, but I just wanted to throw that out there. And then March 13th, if you didn't hear already, is going to be voting day. So we have other business, sign, made...
Also an announcement, the deliberative session for the school board, which was to be held, for the school district, which was to be held tomorrow night at the new high school, has been moved to Thursday night due to the impending snowstorm of tomorrow, and I would suggest that we allow our assistant in-town administrator to attend that meeting.
Thank you.
Works for me. I don't think we really need to vote on that, but...
No, that wasn't a motion, that was just a comment. I'd also announce that the planning board will be closing at 5:00 on Thursday.
On Thursday, for the same reason?
Exactly.
Okay. And we don't know anything about the clerk's office, because that's not our area, so... Okay, so we're moving on to manifests.
We are.
So you have...
I have.
Pass them to the right, maybe?
Nope, no, don't have to do that yet, because we had announcements. So, sign, I move to sign vendor manifest dated 2/6/2018 in the amount of $66,239.62.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move to sign the new fire rescue manifest dated 2/6/2018 in the amount of $32,855.91.
Second.
That's Jim. All in favor?
Aye.
Right where your thumb is.
Motion to sign the payroll manifest with a pay period of 1/7/2018 through 1/20/2018, with the pay date of 1/25/2018.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion to sign the payroll manifest for pay period 1/21/2018 through 2/3/2018, with the pay date of 2/8/2018.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Larry?
Make the motion to sign the veterans' tax credit for map 13-2-15-17 for tax year 2018.
There, second?
Second.
That was Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
And make the motion to sign requisition 2018003 in the amount of $121.01 for the cable committee for replacement monitor.
Second. Second by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, is that, that's all of them, right?